Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank you for coming to the August 8, 2022 Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. Sorry it took us a few extra minutes to get ready tonight. We have a pretty full agenda this evening. I'm gonna do my best to power through it as best as possible while giving everything the attention it deserves. Thanks all you guys that came. Thank all you guys that'll watch this later on YouTube. We appreciate it. I'd like to start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Lohman.
Join me, please. Father, we do thank you for the opportunity to come and to meet in our free nation that we have, and we just pray that our freedom would remain and that some of these rules and regulations would lighten up a little bit. And Lord, we just pray for the people of Kentucky that have suffered through the floods. We pray for the people of Ukraine. And we've got a mess going on in Taiwan, and we pray for that situation. Just give us direction as commissioners. Let us make wise decisions, and let us seek your guidance. In Christ's name I pray, amen. You join me for the pledge.
I am a black religious to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohman. Good words. There's a lot going on all over the world. You think of one little thing, one bad thing in the news here, one bad thing in the news there, but we're living in a time now where it's everywhere and it's all the time, and I'm glad it's not in Stanley County. We had none sign up for public comments, so I don't want... Hold on before I jump to that. We had spoken closed session. I would just like to seek a motion to add the NC DOT resolution as item 13 on the agenda and push consent to 14. Do I have a commission that you want to do that?
No.
The motion by Commissioner Effer. Can we have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, my Commissioner Furr. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Is that five to two? Did I get that right? Motion passes five to two. Okay. The first gen item was public comments. We have none. Is there anyone here that would like to put their name down, everything in particular? Now we're gonna move on. Item number two, public hearing and adoption of Stanley County industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance. That's gonna be Mr. Dwayne Wingo. How you doing, sir?
Good. Thank you, commissioners. Stanley County Utility is submitting an industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance and industrial pre-treatment fee schedule that require adoption by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners. Before the vote to approve the industrial sewer use ordinance can proceed, a public hearing must be opened to discuss any comments and concerns or views. After the comments and concerns are addressed, the public hearing can be closed for a vote on the adoption of the industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance. Notification of the public hearing was advertised in the Stanley press in advance of the August 8 Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. The purpose of the ordinance is to provide the Utilities Department the ability to issue industrial pre-treatment permits to industries which discharge sewer flows to the West Stanley and Baden wastewater treatment plants, as well as the end-users that are connected to Stanley County Sewer Collection System that discharge into Abomarles wastewater treatment plant. It provides a mechanism to assess fees or surcharges for constituent loadings specifically in excess of the permitted limits. The objection or the objective is to prevent the wastewater treatment process upsets and to ensure stream discharges do not exceed the wastewater treatment plants' approved permitted limits. The adoption of the industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance is a requirement of the EPA and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for all wastewater treatment facilities accepting sewer discharges from industries that are classified as a categorical industrial user by the EPA. Charlotte Pipe and Foundry is one such industry, and we have reached an agreed-upon industrial user permit that is to be executed upon adoption of the industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance. Because the industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance will be newly established, it can and will be reviewed regularly by the Stanley County Utilities Director, and future recommended modifications may be brought before the Stanley County Board of Commissioners for approval. Staff is requesting to open the public hearing for the Stanley County industrial sewer use ordinance, and then proceed with a vote to approve the ordinance with the attached surcharge fees.
Thank you, Director Wingo. Before I open the public hearing, do you have any comments from the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing open for the adoption of Stanley County industrial pre-treatment sewer use ordinance. Is there anyone here that would like to come and speak for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve Stanley County industrial pre-treatment ordinance with attached surcharge fees.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Chairman Almond. We have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Effer. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wingo.
Mr. Chairman, before Dwayne steps down, Dwayne, thank you so much for your and your staff's all hard work with the Liberty Hill Pump Station when it went down the other week. I know you guys worked really hard to get that thing up and going, so I just wanted to say...
We hope to have a replacement soon.
Thank you so much for getting that done.
As a point of order, just to cover myself here, when we discussed adding that agenda item, we did that, I did actually not get a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion by Commissioner Furr, second. Second by Commissioner Effer. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry for doing that out of order. Thank you, Commissioner Lohman, for catching me up. Next item is the public hearing for the consideration of a road name. That is also... That's gonna be Rebecca Burgess. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I do have one road name for consideration. The private drive to be named is located off of Stony Road, approximately 500 feet south of the intersection with Remington Way and Locust. The seismantist consists of three newly constructed residences, which have all been addressed from Stony Road. All property owners were contacted with naming their driveway, and unanimous request was made for the name of Hope Town Road. And this requested road name has been approved through the Communications Department, and I'm requesting that you hold a public hearing and approve the new road name of Hope Town Road.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. All right. We have to have a public hearing for this, so I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this road renaming? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
Make a motion to approve the new road name, Hope Town Road.
We have a motion from Vice Chairman Almond.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Lohman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, guys, if you're here, you have Hope Town Road.
Thank you, commissioners.
Cool name, by the way. Next item on the agenda, presenter's gonna be Bob Rimsberg. We have a board appointment for the Board of Adjustments.
Good evening, commissioners, chairman. Good to see you this evening. We do have a need on the Board of Adjustment to fill three positions. It's the Board that consists of nine members, which are of course appointed by you in staggered three-year terms. Seven of those are regular members, two of them are alternate members. Alternate members do fill in whenever regular members are either absent or when they must be recused due to a conflict of interest. The open positions are two regular members and one alternate. Current members whose terms are expiring are Billy Franklin Lee and Michael D. Effer. The alternate position is currently vacant due to the resignation of Shannon Maynard, who has moved from Stanley County. There are five current applications, however, two of those, Dr. John Ekman and Kevin Brickman, are recently appointed to the planning board, and so they're really not eligible. Terms for three board members expired this past June, and new appointments are needed. Franklin Lee and Michael Effer have both applied for reappointment, if that's the desire of the commissioners, and Judy Nelms would be a new Board of Adjustment member if her application is accepted by you. She and her husband live in the Mineral Springs area, just south of Oakboro. Current members will continue to serve until replacements are appointed by you. If that happens tonight, then their terms will have expired, and the new ones will begin, and we'll install them at the next meeting. But we need you to appoint two regular members and one alternate member to serve three-year terms, which would expire in June of 2025.
Thank you, Director Rimsberg.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioners, would you like to discuss doing this as a slate?
I have a question.
This particular board, do they receive compensation, or is it totally volunteer?
They do. Might depend on your definition of volunteer, but yes, they do get received compensation, $40 per meeting plus mileage, and the chair of the board, which is selected by the board members, gets $50 per meeting.
Thank you. How often do they meet?
Only as needed. Generally scheduled once a month, but in reality, we usually only have two to four or five meetings a year. It really varies from year to year, so it's hard to predict, but I don't think we've ever had more than about five in a year.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Franklin Lee, Michael Effer, and Judy Nelms as a slate.
Second there.
Do we have to...
Would you specify Judy Nelms as the alternate, or does the board choose that?
No, I would request that you do that, yes.
You want to amend it?
I'll make amendment to make Judy Nelms the alternate.
You can do that. You agree with the amendment?
Second there, yeah.
So we have an amended motion to present Franklin Lee, Michael Effer, and Judy Nelms as a slate, with Judy Nelms being the alternate, correct? That's the motion on the table. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion from commissioners? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Rimsberg. Next item on tonight's agenda is gonna be Mr. Clinton Swearingen, the Tax Collector's annual settlement.
This is the gentleman that sent us that nice little postcard the other week, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman Jordan, members of the board. Yeah, I just sent everybody 2022 tax bills, but I'm actually here to give the annual settlement for 21 tax bills, which is fiscal year 2122. And per general statute 105373, the tax collector must present an annual settlement to the governing board. I've got several attachments in your packet agenda tonight to provide an overall collection activity for fiscal year 2122. The real and personal property rate was at 98.02% this year, which is... Last year, I was here telling you it was an all-time high at 97.79, and I'm here tonight telling you it's another high at 98.02. So we are very, very, very happy with that. I was going back through my books, and June 30th of 2013, we were at 94.65. So we have really ramped it up since then, and I know Andy appreciates that because that's more funds for the budget. So like I said, last year it was 97.79, this year it's 98.02. We've used all the remedies possible to us, garnishment, attachment, debt set-off, SCHEEP foreclosure. We really did well with the SCHEEP fund this year, and for those who don't know that, that's unclaimed funds sitting in the North Carolina State Treasurer's Department. Most of the people have passed away or deceased, and as an entity who's owed money, we can petition on their behalf to get that tax money. So we actually collected $73,187 last fiscal year through that program. Anybody that's watching this on YouTube, you can go to nc cash dot com, put in your name, all the addresses that you've lived at in the state of North Carolina, and if you've got cash out there, you can collect it that way. So I encourage anybody to look at that, because if you don't collect, if you don't cash in yourself and you owe us money at tax office, we're gonna get it for you, so check that out. As you go through the attachments, the first is the analysis of the countywide levy. That pretty much lays everything out there for you to look at. Tax rate at 61 cent, 98.02% collection rate. That 98.02 does not include registered motor vehicles. That's collected when you buy your tag now with a tax and tag. That number was actually at 99.63%, because there's very, very few loopholes for people to get through there and not pay their tax when they get their tag renewed. The next attachment is the annual audit report. This is a report that I fill out every month, and Andy and Toby in finance gets copies of this, kinda keeps us up with where we're going. The next line item or next attachment is the delinquent collections report. So not only are we collecting tax year 2021 taxes, we're also trying to get all the money that was due to us in the past that people still haven't paid. And you'll see down at the bottom for the 2011-2012 year, the uncollected amount there as of June 30th was $77,924.07. So that money will not disappear, but I cannot force collections on that any longer after 10 years by state statute. So if somebody wants to come in and pay out the goodness of their heart, we're gonna take it, but I can't force anybody to pay that money. To give you a breakdown of that, that $77,000, almost $17,000 of it's old registered motor vehicle bills, which were using the old legacy system before the tax and tag came about. Those were really, really hard to collect, so that's that amount, and then the remaining $60,000 is real and personal property together. Also, for information purposes only, last year of the 2010 year, the amount that kinda rolled off was $161,413.12. So we're much better this year than we were last year about getting all that old money without letting it roll off. The next item is the tax collector settlement information of uncollected taxes. This is three different reports that we run to make sure everything balances and what each line item is and how much it's still owing. You'll see that the total uncollected for fiscal year 2122 was $635,791.24. Last year, that number was $672,000. So once again, we're better, which if the collection rate's up, then we should be better on that side anyway. So that's what that is. The next one is affidavit saying I've done everything I can to collect all that I can. And lastly, is the charge to the tax collector with collecting the current year fiscal year 2223 taxes. I would like to thank Pam Blake, she's the supervisor in the collections office, and her three employees, Pat Fesperman, Rhonda Carver, and Tamara Freeman. They have done a fantastic job of getting as much money for Stanley County as we possibly can. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Swearingen, if I heard all that right, this should be your... If you ever need to go hunt another job, you should just have him play back this particular question, because not only have you hit year after year of exceeding your goals to where you're at 98 point some odd percent of collections, but you had $77,000 in tax money you're not allowed to go get anymore, so you went and got $78,000 from dead people.
Dead people.
That's pretty awesome. No one can say you're not diligent, sir. No. And I do thank you. You have a job that a lot of folks... Nobody loves a tax man, but you do it well.
I appreciate it.
I've been blessed to interact with you professionally for a while, and I never knew a tax man besides you, but if they're all like you in your department...
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. You commissioners, have any questions or anything? Anything, Mr. Swearingen?
I have a comment, and correct me if I'm wrong, but total real estate value, personal property, public service value, that's $5,250,000, correct?
That's correct.
If the citizens of Stanley County wanna know if Stanley County's growing, we're growing. Yeah, because what was it, three, four, five years ago? Do you know? Do you remember? A lot less than $5 billion.
Yeah, a lot less. We were probably around the $4.2 billion mark.
But right now, we're $5,250,870,141.
Yeah, we're just over $6 billion counting motor vehicles.
Y'all are doing a great job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Swearingen? We... I'd like to have... You can probably put this in one motion. I would like to request somebody to make a motion to accept or approve the annual settlement report and to charge the tax collector with collecting the 2223 taxes.
Go move.
Motion by Commissioner Lohman, second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, board. I'm not gonna go anywhere yet.
Don't send me any more postcards, either.
But wait, there's more.
Wait, there's more. Like an info marshal.
Presentation from Clinton Swearingen on the tax foreclosure.
Yeah. The reason I'm here for this section is I'm not happy with 98.02%. I won't be happy until we're at 100%, because that's our job. That's what we wanna be at. And to help me get there, I feel like we need a tax foreclosure attorney to represent us on our tax foreclosure cases. I put the bid out to every local attorney in Stanley County, and the only person to respond was First Street Legal, owned by Connie Josie. She used to be with Brown, Brown &amp; Brown, now she's out on her own. And she... Her proposal there, I put in y'all's packet. Her hourly rate is $300 per hour. I went back and pulled the numbers. When I came in and took over as tax administrator, October of 13, I felt like we needed a foreclosure program desperately to get that 94% up to where we're at, and the board at that time approved Josh Morton to be the foreclosure attorney. And so from 2014 until February of 2018, Josh represented Stanley County. We foreclosed on 32 properties. We collected $600,554.24, and Josh's fees equated to $14,931. So we collected $600,000, we paid Josh around $15,000. And when I say 32 properties, we never actually foreclosed on one person. Had to get the ball rolling, the judgment to go through in court to get the individuals to say, "This is serious, I need to pay my bills," and they paid it. So we didn't take anybody's property. We had to go through some hurdles in the court system, but we didn't take anybody's property. So then, in 2018, Josh resigned, and that was in February of 18. And then in September of 18, Bart Honeycutt was contracted to do our foreclosure work, and he worked from September of 18 till March of 2022, when he resigned. And he did 25 properties for $346,513 in collections and fees of $9,818. So since 2014, we have done 57 properties, collected 947,067.85, and we've paid almost $25,000 in fees. So that's kinda where we stand. Josh was charging $200 an hour, Bart was charging $250 an hour, and now Connie's here with her $300 an hour rate. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners?
Just a comment. That program works.
It does.
We appreciate you working with the attorneys. I'll be happy to make a motion that we... First Street Legal, Connie Josie, as the attorney to handle the foreclosures, tax foreclosure.
We have a motion to approve Connie Josie just affirmed to be the Anna County Tax Administration Office Tax Foreclosure Attorney. Commissioner Lohman, we have a second? Second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Swearingen. Director Jenkins, COVID-19 and monkeypox update. Before you get started, thank you for coming to provide this update, and I know we'll all be glad when we live in a world where we no longer have to.
Yes, sir. We'll second that as well. Get logged in here, and I'll try to get started. Here for the COVID update for you. So currently, our community level for Stanley County is designated as high. That's due to hospital bed uses, hospital missions due to COVID, and new COVID-19 cases. Based on CDC guidance, again, it's highly recommended to wear a mask indoors, stay up to date with the vaccines that are available. Get tested if you have symptoms. There's a lot of home tests available now for everyone. Plus, you can get several free from your insurance company if you have insurance as well as an option. And if you have... May need to take additional precautions if you're at risk of severe illness. This is our latest graph. It shows where we're trending as far as percent positive and positive cases. Again, this may be a little misleading, because there's a lot of at-home tests that do not get reported at the state level, so... But this is somewhat indicative of what we're currently experiencing as we're kinda trending up at this time. Here's the latest COVID-19 data. Last week, we had 205 cases. Over the weekend and today, we had 66 cases reported. Of those, eight were pediatric. We had three additional deaths reported. Hospitalizations are about nine currently. Total deaths are up to 285. Total reported cases, this is cumulative from the very beginning of the pandemic, is at 21,332. And our vaccines, completed one doses at 48. Initial series of vaccinations is at 45, and one booster additional doses at 25% for the county.
Director Jenkins, I'm meant to ask this, I was at the health department meeting, but I forgot. Reported cases, are those de-dubbed, de-hated cases, like are they... Are they the same individual that may have had it more than once, or are these unique...
If you've had it and then you've cleared, and you come back and you get tested again positive, it would be reported again. So yes, sir. It may be somebody's been positive more than once.
Yeah, I know quite a few folks that have had it.
Several times.
Three times.
Yes, sir. Good question. And just as always, I want to remind you, vaccines are available. Pfizer Children 5 to 11, Moderna six months to 11. That's on Monday afternoons when we're holding those clinics. Moderna 12 and older are on Tuesdays, and Pfizer 12 and older are on Wednesdays. So there's a hotline available if anyone's interested in any vaccines. And what we're hearing right now is that we're looking for a vaccine in the fall that they're working on. That should hopefully be flu and COVID all in one, is what we're looking for. It's not come to pass yet, but sometime in the fall, that's what the expectation is. All right. So I did want to point out, there's a CDC Quarantine Isolation Calculator out there. It's a very... Pretty nifty tool. We still get a lot of questions from the health department for businesses and places in the community, churches and whatnot, about isolation, when to isolate, when to quarantine. This calculator makes it pretty much foolproof. Anybody can just about use it and be able to walk through this guidance, and it tells you exactly what the CDC recommended guidance is. So that's available if you just Google CDC Quarantine Isolation Calculator. It's out there and available if anybody has access. So moving on to monkeypox. Heard a lot of discussion about monkeypox over the past probably few, couple weeks. Currently, there's 7,510 cases in the U.S. First North Carolina case was reported June 23, 2022. North Carolina currently has 111 cases, spread among across multiple counties, and majority cases have been in men who have sex with men. Little bit about monkeypox. It can spread to anyone by direct skin-to-skin contact with someone that has the rash, sores, or scabs. A lot of times, it can be on clothes or linen or surfaces, and can last up to a couple weeks sometimes on those surfaces. Exposure to respiratory droplets or oral fluids during prolonged face-to-face contact with someone with monkeypox can also spread this particular virus. Incubation period is typically seven to 14 days. Infectious from time symptom start until lesions heal, and a new skin is formed underneath the scabs, and the scabs have fallen off. So that's... Picture to the right there, where I'm looking, is just some visual examples of what monkeypox it looked like. So a lot of times, it's being misdiagnosed. People may think it's just a Z or a cyst or something of that nature, and turns out they do have monkeypox. Signs and symptoms: fever, exhaustion, headache, sore throat, cough, swollen lymph nodes in the neck, armpits are growing. Yet a rash appears after the initial symptoms, and the lesions may be all over the body, including palms and feet, hit, and the head. Rash is very painful, what's been... What we've been updated on from a public health standpoint, and what people that have had this particular virus has experienced, is very painful. standpoint and what people that have had this particular virus has experienced, very painful rash. Testing and vaccinations, testing can be conducted through the North Carolina State Lab. Must test for other rash-type illnesses such as herpes and varicella, which is chicken pox. Specimens are collected by swabbing the inside of the lesion, which takes three to five days for results from the state lab. Vaccines, genios are available to those who meet the following criteria, close contact in past 14 days for confirmed case of monkeypox, gay or bisexual men or transgender individuals who report any of the following in the last 90 days, multiple or anonymous sex partners diagnosed with sexually transmitted infection or receiving medication to prevent HIV infection. So the bottom line for monkeypox is the majority of our population would not be at risk for this, but it's just something to make folks aware of, that this is out there. And we may see it in our community at some point in time. It is in surrounding areas, counties, we have seen some cases pop up here and there. So just one. Mecklenburg is one, Rowan, I think it just reported they had their first case. There's a couple unconfirmed out there, but we'll keep.
None in standing.
No, sir, none in standing at this time, fortunately.
When I was home at 5 o'clock, I turned on WSOC TV, and the lead story was monkeypox. They said over the past three weeks, you know how viruses have that multiplication effect? They went from 18 cases three weeks ago to 30, then to 60. So it's been doubling, you know, like the viruses tend to multiply. And I know it's starting in, I guess the subgroup is African-American men who are gay, but a virus really does not know if you're gay or straight or white or black or rich or poor. You know, that's why I think you got to be aware of these things and just be aware of what's out there because it's not going to stay in this subgroup, just like any virus.
I just want to thank you all for allowing me to present tonight as, you know, this allows us to address our North Carolina Public Health Accreditation Activity 9.1, which is a benchmark of ours for our statutory required accreditation activities and just has to do with sharing appropriate medical information with the public and stakeholders in the community served by the local health department so they can make healthcare choices, educated healthcare choices. And it helps us meet some of our essential, essential public health services under general statutes as well. So for that, I'll just open that up. Any questions or anything I can provide additional information on?
Director Jenkins, aside from what you've outlined as, well, I'm just going to, what do you call, common sense policies with people, you know, while COVID numbers are on the rise, are there any general recommendations coming out for CDC for businesses or anything? Or is it still just using common sense?
A lot of that would apply that I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Jordan with working indoors. Wear a mask if you're indoors and, you know, stay up to date on your vaccines. That's the biggest information we're getting received from CDC.
And that COVID flu vaccine that they're looking into in the fall, is that going to be a requirement? If you get flu, you get COVID vaccine or?
Oh, I'm sure it'll be option, they'll have options still available because not everybody's going to want a COVID vaccine. So yes, sir. But that's just something that may want to go ahead and kill, get one vaccine versus having to have multiple vaccines. Yes, sir.
Question. How many beds are designated at the hospital for COVID patients? Currently, how many patients are over there with COVID?
Commissioner Lohman, I couldn't speak to beds designated. That would be a Brian Freeman question, but I can tell you currently, there's eight individuals occupying, or they're inpatient with COVID locally here at Atrium Stanley.
Do you know the ages of those people?
No, I do not, not one of ones hospitalized.
Ages of those people?
If they're willing to.
Ages and can you get the number of beds that are designated for COVID?
Number of beds, I can probably tell you, I don't know about the ages.
And I think you said there had been, what, three deaths from COVID?
That was over the weekend, yes, sir.
Three this weekend?
That was reported over the weekend, yes, sir.
Do we have any idea of the ages of those?
Past 60 days, we had, we've had eight deaths. Of those, ages are 64 to 90. And of those, there was only one that was a breakthrough case that was fully vaccinated. The rest had not gotten up to speed on all their vaccines and boosters.
Have underlying issues?
Most likely from 64 to 90, yes, sir, with those age groups.
I think you had an answer to a question back on it. I know you worked for the health department.
Yes, sir. For the people that are currently hospitalized, I think that was your question, middle 60s through middle 90s is the age range.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Wendy.
Chairman, I got a question for Director Jenkins. Do you have the free test for COVID available at the Health Department?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, thank you.
We usually give it out a couple per household or one per individual. Yes, sir, it's take-home, yes.
Thank you.
One quick question. You may have covered it, but they're no longer doing the testing out here in the parking lot and stuff, so where can people get tested? You may have covered it, I just.
Most.
They pulled the, the state pulled the.
Correct. Walgreens is, some of the local pharmacies are providing, you can go to your urgent care, your primary care provider, or you can get the free home test that we offer, or your insurance company, I think with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're getting, I think you want to say it's eight for some plans, eight free home tests per month. So you can get a pretty good supply of home tests just by checking in with your insurance company.
To think of the, of having accurate numbers, for those that care about accurate numbers, and I think we live in a world now where we're. You know, is it good advice to tell people, hey, if you test positive, call the local Health Department, let them know that they have one person who is positive?
Cam, but it's not like we'd be able to report it because it has to go through, a lot of times, I guess, through a state lab for the testing or whatnot, and that's how they capture a lot of that information. But it's better if they want to call if they have questions about, should they leave the house or not, or should they go back to work if they have some of those questions? And we still field quite a bit of those calls even today with those type of questions.
Could you speak to the demand of shots currently?
Not very strong, Commissioner, just a few here and there right now.
And commonly, what age group?
It's going to be in your older age groups typically that are up for boosters and in your vaccines. I haven't gauged that in a couple of weeks to give exactly, you know, what demographic. Well, I'd have to, like I said, I'm prepared to answer that tonight, I'd have to find out for you. Yeah, I mean, certainly would.
Anything else, Commissioners, for Director Jenkins?
These boosters that are available now, how effective are they against the current strain of COVID?
Seeing, even with the current boosters, we're still seeing illness from this, for the BA5. But again, as it goes back to earlier on, when we were dealing with the Delta and some of these other variants, those that have been vaccinated or previously infected are faring a lot better than those that have not. And even those that have been previously infected by a different variant, we're seeing reinfection. And as Commissioner Jordan, you spoke to earlier, people that are vaccinated, we're seeing infections there. Again, I just remind everyone that vaccines not to keep you from getting sick, it's again to keep you out of the hospital, keep you from dying. That's the whole, that's the whole purpose of a vaccine. And, you know, going back to monkeypox, I'd pay a little bit more attention to what's going on in New York with polio than I would be concerned with monkeypox. It's still something to be aware of, but that's the reason why we have vaccines. And we're seeing a lot of, a lot of individuals that are opting out of vaccines, and we see little outbreaks of measles and polio and things of that nature. These, a lot of folks that are older generations of me, I tell you, what there is to know about polio is very serious. So it's out there and available, and we recommend folks, if the CDC recommends it and the public health community supports it, it's probably a good idea to take advantage of it.
Director?
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Commissioners, for Director Jenkins? Appreciate your time.
Have a good evening.
We have a presentation tonight from the High Sheriff. Sheriff Crisco, good to have you here tonight, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're going the short straw, I mean, I know it's your department, but they made you come here after hours and give the presentation?
Hey, I love to come and brag about the Sheriff's Office. Thing about it is, I could sit here and brag all night long, but I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that to y'all.
Do I need to bring up my three-minute timer?
Well, no, I did come, I mean, I just, a couple pieces of paper, so that way I can keep myself.
Oh, you like, sir.
No, tonight, I have five topics that I'd like to discuss, and there again, I promise I'll keep it short, and I'm not going to keep us out here all night. Some of those, one's the Sheriff's Office, our mission, personnel accomplishments, goals and challenges. A little bit about, first, the history of the Sheriff's Office. Everybody that's from Stanley County knows, was established in 1841, and it was named in the honor of John Stanley, a New Bern resident and a representative of the North Carolina Commons, which is better known now as House of Representatives. The Sheriff's Office was established that same year. The first sheriff of Stanley County was Eben Hearn, who served as the sheriff from 1841 to 1844. As of today, Stanley County has had 30 elected sheriffs. While I was doing my research on the history of the Sheriff's Office and a little bit about the county, there was one name that came up in the sheriffs that really piqued my interest. He was the 19th elected sheriff. His name was Thomas Franklin Crisco. Now, if there's any relation, I have no idea, that goes way back. He was, he served as a sheriff from 1930 to 1936. And if anybody that's lived here their entire life, they know this, the longest-serving sheriff in Stanley County history is Ralph McSwain. He served as sheriff from 1962 to 1990, 28 years. The mission of the Sheriff's Office is very simple. It is my primary responsibility to ensure that the deputies employed by me are being held to the highest standard while performing their duties, which include protecting the lives, homes and property of our residents. We, as an agency, perform these tasks through our core values, which are the preservation of life, integrity and professionalism. In maintaining this standard, we've made education and training a priority at the Sheriff's Office since I took office in 2018. In 2018, upon taking office, our biggest challenge was fighting the opioid epidemic that our county faced. From 2017 to 2018, Stanley County had a 69 increase, 69% increase in overdoses. From July 2018 to October of 2018, Stanley County sustained the highest rate of overdoses in the state, meaning simple, we led the state in overdoses. From late 2018 to 2021, our county's overdose rate decreased by 29.8%, and the overdose mortality rate saw a 1.2% increase. Now, that sounds bad, but that part sounds good, but this, this right here. During that same time, North Carolina as a whole saw a 50.4% increase in overdoses and a 29.6% increase in mortality rate in overdoses. So as Stanley County was declining, the rest of the state was increasing. It took us several months, but after countless manless hours, hundreds of search warrants, and times away from our family, we no longer are leading the state in overdoses. We were just part of the team because it is, it took the entire county to come together and recognize this. We were just one part of it by going out here and targeting these drug dealers and hitting them head-on. Another big challenge that we faced, just like the country, was the COVID. COVID affected our agency just like it did with most. We were faced to work, short-staffed, and those that were not sick worked extra hours to fill in the empty spots. We even had some that would come to work still recovering from being sick, just to help out. They were just that dedicated. As I mentioned, we were already short-staffed and still have, we had a detention center that was overcrowded, and we had it running rampant through the detention center. Luckily, we came through all this with no serious issues. We never had the first death, thank goodness. Some of our big accomplishments, in 2018, when I made the decision to run for sheriff of this county, I made a promise and a commitment to the citizens that I would combat this drug problem with every resource that we had at our disposal. At the time, our county had been leading the state in overdoses per capita. It gives me great pleasure to tell you that we no longer lead the state in overdoses and have not for several years now. Our narcotics division has seized over 66,000 grams of controlled substances. To give that to you in a better perspective, that's 145 pounds of illegal controlled substances. The main ones were heroin, methamphetamines and fentanyl. Not until recently have we started seeing a comeback of cocaine. Along with the drugs, we received in excess of over a million dollars in U.S. currency. And our investigators, investigators executed over 300 search warrants. As most of you are aware, with drugs come theft from our homes and our businesses. Since day one, I've instilled in our detectives the importance of going out, making face-to-face contact with the victims instead of just contacting them by phone. Make it personal, sit down at the kitchen table and talk to these victims. I'm very proud to say that our detective vision has and continues to recover an average of over $100,000 worth of stolen property every month. Some month, some months, it has exceeded well over $250,000. Another big accomplishment, shortly after taking office in 2018, Commissioner Jordan approached me and asked me if the Sheriff's Office would be interested in it and having animal control in the shelter fall under my authority. I explained to the Commissioner, if we take both entities, we want to start fresh. Just a few of those changes consisted in new name, hiring a shelter manager to run and operate the shelter. After a long process in October of 2020, Board of Commissioners made it official. I'm extremely excited to say that for the year 2021, the shelter has had a 95.2% live release rate. This means that 95.2% of the animals that we have come into our shelter have left the facility alive, returned to their homes and their owners, adopted into new homes or have transferred into rescue partners. To the average person, this may not sound like a big deal, but in reality, it's huge for us. By maintaining this average, it has opened doors to endless possibilities, including grants, statewide support, in addition to the support we still have and continue to have from our community. Our goals, it's very simple, y'all, to continuing, stay true to our core values, which again are preservation of life, integrity and holding everybody to the highest professionalism that we can. We will continue to hold our staff to that standard. We'll be also, we'll also be sending our staff to more specialized training in the upcoming year to ensure that we keep up with the newest trends that we keep getting faced with day in and day out. Again, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me the opportunity to come speak this evening. Again, I could talk and brag about the staff that I have because at the end of the day, I'm the sheriff, yes, but they're the ones that's making me look good. They're the ones that are here in the forefront doing the job. I just make sure they've got the support and the right equipment and training to make sure they're the best of the best. That's all I've got. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Just want to give a shout out to the animal, animal shelter, it's called the, what's it called again? It's called the Protect.
Animal Protective Services.
Protective Services.
Yes.
I was going to do a workday down there because I'm starting to do my workdays, but with COVID coming back, I'm postponing it again. I did go down there and talked to Jenna, and they just had that very successful adopt a pet thing where I think they, they pretty much ran out of.
Animals.
They had like, I think they had like 22 or something that they found.
It was a huge success.
In like one day or something like that, so kudos to that.
Thank you and your deputies and your jailers and your animal control folks. Thank you for doing a good job, a great job. And we just ask that you keep us informed on anything that you might need because we want to make sure our citizens are protected.
I will definitely do that, thank you.
Sheriff Crisco, I've been proud of you guys and what you've done, and I know you will, but I'll go out of my way to ask for it. Please give Jenna my thanks.
Yes, sir.
As much as you lead that department, both departments, I know Tim Rogers and Jenna keep the wheels on that bus.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Jenna is incredibly overworked, and we are trying to do what we can to help in that regard. I know we continue to work on that together.
Okay.
For those of you that heard that great release number. For those of you that heard that great release number, thank you for sharing that. Don't get all excited. They'll get full again the next day.
Oh, I know. It definitely comes and goes.
They actually, I talked to Jenna one day last month. They were talking about what they had done, and they, they had a volunteer from Stanley County loaded, and I guess her own vehicle or, or van, and they drove like 29 animals from Maryland.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, 29 animals from Maryland because that's how they, or they had to go to find a rescue that had openings or, or, or find a shelter. They drove those cats across four states just to free up a room here, and within 24 hours-
We're back full.
Back to full. So you have a full prison, you have a full shelter. You need to get Clinton to come work for you because he knows, apparently he knows how to get money.
That's okay. I got a Chief Thompson. He, he knows how to find money.
Thank you guys so very much for what you do.
One more quick question, Commissioner Long, trigger something. The detention center.
Yes.
No, normally, there's always a problem getting staff to work there. Are you guys still understaffed there? Do you have all those positions full?
We're not full, but I can, I can, I can sit here and say to y'all tonight, we have a pool of applicants, good quality applicants to pick from. So we're, we're definitely on the right track of getting back. Are we always go, can I stand up here and say we'll always be full? No. I mean, it's just the world we live in. But we, yeah, we're on the right track of being 95 to 98% full.
Tell Van Shaw to look somewhere else.
That's exactly right.
You don't need to be, you can go to Mecklenburg and pick some. Don't be poaching iron.
That's right.
I do, what Commissioner Shudo asked, I do have a question. Are the folks that are being charged and are in the detention center, have you seen any kind of increase in case loads going forward? Are they still kind of stalled?
Well, I'll be honest. I will have to ask Sergeant Parker that works in the courthouse. She will know that better than I do. I mean, she doesn't brief me every day or even once a week on that. It comes and goes. Honestly, it, it all depends on defense attorneys, them being there and them getting their clients there, whether there's somebody in the jail or if they're, you know, out on bond. It all depends on them being there to be able to either accept the plea or go to a trial. I hope that gave you somewhat of an answer.
I'd like to give you a shout out too. As you know, in the area down below, we've got a lot of break-ins down there, and my own place got broken into there, and I appreciate the extra officers around.
Yes, sir.
It's looking good.
I was going to see about commenting, go, did y'all get his stuff back? Because I remembered that. He was hot about that. And I don't blame him. I got a, excuse me, APS, and I guess we're all going to sit here and brag on you a bit, but I got a call from Police Chief and Oberg, TJ, one day. We were talking about you guys, and he said, uh, I asked him how it was since APS had taken it over. He, he said, "Man, it's like I have a deputy in my back pocket." He said, "I called the way it used to be. I'd, I'd call and they give up. Well, how, how bad do you really need somebody to come them out?" He's like, "Well, if I didn't need you, I wouldn't be standing here calling you." And he said, "Now, like, I pick up the phone, or, or, you know, I, I call communications on the radio, and it's like instant deputy. They just show up and they solve it. They handle it, so I can get back to doing police work." He said, "It's, it's amazing." So your fellow police departments appreciate what you guys do too.
Good.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Next item on the agenda, we have, I think this is going to be Molly Alexi, County Extension Director. We have a enhanced voluntary ag district program application.
Yes.
Same one from last month, right?
Yes, it is. Good evening, Commissioners, and this is Rebecca Brickner. So as you know, Soil and Water Conservation District and Cooperative Extension, we serve as sort of the advisors or liaisons for your appointed ag advisory board. So the Stanley County Agriculture Advisory Board reviewed and approved an application from Rebecca and Joshua Gibson to be enrolled in the Enhanced Voluntary Ag District on April 20th. This 13.37 acre property is located on 1101 Polk Ford Road in Stanfield. We presented this application at the 516 meeting, and it was tabled until after the Board of Adjustment meeting. At the Board of Adjustment meeting on July 13th, the board confirmed that the Gibson property is ag land and therefore eligible to enroll in the EBAD program. So we're here to recommend that you guys approve this property to be enrolled in this voluntary ag district program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Molly.
Have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Question, Rebecca. Do you ever cross country, you had, do you ever cross country at Greyston? I think you were on conference for every year you read, I believe.
That was a long time ago. You put on some good races back in the day.
Thank you.
And I brought Rebecca with me tonight because she's actually been to the property and is very familiar in case you had those questions.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the EVAD application for Joshua, Joshua and Rebecca Gibson. We have a motion to approve, to approve the Enhanced Voluntary Ag District Act by Vice Chairman Almond. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Shudo. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Here is none. All in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, ladies. Item number 10, the criteria to use design-build-construction-delivery method for the new Emergency Management Training Center. Mr. Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you this evening are the criteria to utilize the design-build-construction methodology for the new Emergency Management Training Center that the county is the fiduciary entity for. That is the North Carolina Department of Insurance and the North Carolina National Guard project that is going on out at, near the airport. It's roughly, the county received $28 million from the, the state and an additional $3 million from Department of Insurance. So a total of $31 million for that Emergency Management Training Center that will be constructed. And this criteria this evening will allow us to move forward with the design-build versus the, what was more traditional five, 10 years ago, which was design, bid, build, where you have to take the lowest responsible bidder. This, in this case, you do design-build, and you put that out there in RFQ, Request for Qualifications. Take those qualifications, and then you, you'd pick the, the general contractor that you want to use for the project that can demonstrate the ability to, to do a project of that size and scope. And then you work with that general contractor to negotiate guaranteed maximum price for the, for the work that they will do. So, and this is a, design-build method is something we've done in the past. Our EMS base was built with a design-build. The, the Cosmetology Building at Stanley Community College was built with design-build. So this is something that, you know, Stanley County has utilized in the past. So the criteria are, are before you this evening, and we will be posting the RFQ. If you all approve this this evening, we will be, we plan to post the, the design-build RFQ that we've been working in partnership with the Department of Insurance on later this week.
County Manager, Commissioners, you have any questions? County Manager?
Just a comment or clarification. The county, I guess, is kind of like a, we're the conduit, taking the funds and working through the bid process. But the funds are not coming from the county. Is that correct?
The county, the, it's not county funds. It's no, so it's not local dollars that are funding this project. It's state dollars that are funding the project. And, and in some respects, it's actually federal money that's passing through the state to us. And so we're essentially the fiduciary agent. We're the ones that are responsible for, will be letting the contracts, and also filling out all the quarterly reports we have to fill out and, and keep up with that. And obviously, we have all the financial responsibilities, but we are not the, the county and the local taxpayers are not the, on the hook for this project. It's a state grant.
We get the assets, but here in the county.
We do, and there'll be county-owned assets that we'll lease to the National Guard and the Department of Insurance. But the National Guards actually will be the entity that, similar to the other National Guard assets that are out there, that will be, that we will lease to them, that they will own and, or they will operate. We will own them, they will operate under a long-term deal. And so again, Stanley County taxpayer won't be on the hook for the operations either. This will, that'll be something the Department of Insurance and the National Guard take care of.
Our local merchants will get the benefit of those coming.
Yeah. Yeah, significant. I mean, we need to talk about the dormitories and that will be constructed and the number of volunteer fire departments, not only from North Carolina, but likely throughout the, the southeast, that will come here for extended time, you know, week, two weeks, and do this emergency management-type training, water rescues, burn houses, closed space, all kinds of different and unique, you know, scenarios that, that, you know, our volunteer fire departments and, and first responders face it, you know, all the time. And so it, this will be the first North Carolina emergency training center in the state of North Carolina. So it's, it's a really neat thing to have in North Carolina. And to your point, these folks that are coming here will likely spend money at local merchants and retail establishments, bars, restaurants, et cetera, which we generate sales tax for.
I make a motion that we adopt the proposed criteria to utilize the design-build-construction-delivery method for the construction of a new Emergency Management Training Center in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Insurance.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion from Commissioner Shudo, a second from Commissioner Eifer. Any further discussion?
Trace.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, the opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You know, sort of to, to take the sheriff's comments about the opioid issue a step further. And obviously, the opioid issue was a very critical issue facing Stanley County several years ago. Certainly, the sheriff's done a really good job of attacking the, the supply side of, of this issue. But then there's the other piece of it is the, you know, the folks that are using. And, you know, how do you, how do we work with those folks to transition them into treatment and/or, and, and recovery? And so the Stanley County Health Department secured a $1 million HERSA grant on the federal government. And, you know, that grant has funded treatment. It's funded transitional housing for recovery, housing for pre-recover, or pre-treatment. It's dealt with, you know, our, our community paramedics, harm reduction, peer support. So a laundry list of things in addition to what the sheriff was doing on the supply side and trying to attack the problem from that perspective. And as you know, you know, there was an ongoing, you know, lawsuit at the federal level, you know, because this problem wasn't just necessarily unique to North Carolina. It was across the country. And so there, you know, an opioid settlement was reached that, with the distributors and the manufacturers. The county, Stanley County, will receive 4.0, almost $4.7 million over an 18-month period. We've received $179,380 to date. We anticipate receiving another $394,490 later in this fiscal year, in the next month or two, actually. And then we will receive about $390,000 next fiscal year. That number will decline over time, but for the first three or four years, we'll get, get roughly $390,000. We've secured that $1 million grant, and again, that's funding, you know, some community paramedicine, some drug treatment, harm reduction strategies. It's funding peer support and recovery housing. And, and some of that, we, the county has additional funds that haven't been used, and we were able to get an extension. So the peer support and the community paramedicine, which we thought would end in, at the end of August, is actually funded now through with HERSA grant, through the end of December of 2022. And so that, you know, allows us to have a little more freedom, flexibility to fund some other, some of these other programs with non-HERSA money. One of those programs is the Gateway of Hope Legacy Houses that, that are out, based out in Locust. And these houses are transitional housing for those who are in recovery. And they're really an important cog in the wheel of this whole mitigation strategy around opioid misuse disorder. And so the HERSA funding for those legacy, that legacy house and that's transitional housing ends on August 31st. And so it is my recommendation I'm bringing for you forward this evening is that we will use $60,000 of the opioid settlement funding. This board will appropriate towards that transitional housing in support of the Gateway House, Legacy House. And so 60,000 of that 179 that we've received to date, and then we'll, should receive another $394,000 later this, this fiscal year. Asking for 60,000 to be set aside specifically for the next year for Gateway of Hope Legacy House. If any of you know Larry Wilkins, this is the, the initiative that Larry sort of spearheads out there in, in the Locust area. And so I'll stop there and answer any questions. We anticipate, as some of this other HERSA funding rolls off some of these other initiatives and other things, that we anticipate coming to you and asking for these resolutions of appropriation. One of the items in your consent agenda this evening is setting up a special revenue fund for all of these HERSA dollars, and we have to do that. And these resolutions are important because we have to send these, submit these resolutions to a database so that everyone knows specifically how Stanley County is, and every county in North Carolina is spending the funding per our memorandum of, of agreement. And so the resolutions have to be constructed in such a way that we know that, that any, any layperson could look at them and say, "Okay, that's how Stanley County is using these funds." And so I'll stop there and answer any questions. But I fully anticipate, as this fiscal year rolls on, that we'll come back to you with more of these resolutions to pick up some of the initiatives that we've, we've had in place with the HERSA funding that will begin to expire. And so we'll you, we'll begin to tap into these funds and, and begin to use them for, to continue some of these initiatives that have proven to be very successful over the last two or three years.
Thank you. County Manager Lucas, and thank you guys for handling the admin side of all this. A lot of folks don't know how much administrative backend y'all have to do for this. And it's constantly changing, these things roll off and new things pick it up. And the fact that you guys can juggle this and keep us surprised is quite frankly, pretty amazing. Any comments or questions for County Manager Lucas from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. County Manager, are they any type of reporting? I know we do, but like the Legacy House, do they do any type of reporting to the county? Does the county forwards that to the opioid, opioid funds?
They will have to provide us with information so that we can do the reporting. There's required reporting through our memorandum of agreement for these funds. There's required reporting that we have to do on an annual basis. And so that we will, anybody that we contract with, with these funds, there will be specific things in that contract that they'll have to do in order to give us the information or for us to comply with the memorandum of agreement.
Would that whole 60,000 be distributed to them at one time, or is it over?
I, right now, we do, I think, monthly. And so my guess is we would continue in that form and fashion. It's just that, that they would, they would invoice us on a monthly basis.
Anyone else? Can we get a motion? Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the attached opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution seeking to allocate $60,000 for transitional housing to support Gateway of Hope slash Legacy House. Thank you, Vice Chairman Almond. We have a mo, a motion from the Vice Chairman. We have a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next item, also County Manager Lucas, the JCPC appointment.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to the recent resignation of Jackie DeSantis, who recently retired, and Shelley Lee from the JCPC, there are two county commissioner appointee vacancies on the council the JCPC, there are two county commissioner appointee vacancies on the council. At their meeting on May 20th, May of 2022, the council reviewed Ms. Robin Myers' application and is recommending she be appointed to fill one of those vacancies until June 30th of 2023. Her volunteer application, as well as the current member roster of the JCPC, is in your packet. The Juvenile Prevention Council usually meets once a month, typically around lunchtime. And they deal with funding that the county receives from the state for juvenile-related programs and services. I think there's roughly $80,000 in our budget for these different programs, restitution programs and some other programs that are funded for, for juveniles in the, in the community. And a lot of times, there's probation and parole, police officers, educators, other folks that are, that deal with the juvenile population that are on this juvenile prime, juvenile crime prevention council. But I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Got a quick question. I know Jackie was the attorney, you know, for, over there.
Health and Human Services, yes, sir.
Yeah, so do we usually have that position, or can we appoint anybody? We can appoint anybody to her spot.
Yeah, Dolly Clayton is actually on the JCPC, and she's now the board chair for the JCPC. So she's, she's filling, she's on the JCPC as a resolve her role as social services director. But yeah, no, you don't have to specifically appoint Jackie. You could, yeah, you can be.
Can we appoint? I make a motion, we appoint Robin Myers to the, replace Shelley Lee. Please open it.
Give me a second there. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Shudo to approve Robin Myers. Now, I forgot the name, sorry. Do we have a second? Second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? That one passes. Do you need a second motion to fill Jackie's seat? No?
No, not at this point. We don't have, we don't have a, I don't, they haven't brought forth another volunteer or anyone to consider.
And just as a note for the Board of Commissioners, I, I won't be around to do that next year, but if I'm not mistaken, can, there is a commissioner seat on that board if a commissioner chose to want to sit on that board?
Uh, yeah, you could, yes. Then the fast, no one was wanting to necessarily.
We just haven't, well, we have so many boards now, we have to sit on them.
Right.
But if anybody, you know, felt called to, you certainly could. Okay, that, that was it for that item, correct? No further act?
Yes, sir. Now, you've taken the action you needed to on that.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. I guess I'm going to present the next one. The next is.
I was gonna say, do you, are you gonna handle the next one?
Yes, sir. Although you might want to hang tight just in case anybody's got any questions.
All right.
This was the DOT resolution that was passed.
Now, they, nothing's, nothing's happened at this point, no, nothing's been passed. DOT has been here twice. Well, I think one time during a budget work session to just give you some information about the intersection and what they were going to do. They were here on July 11th and gave a presentation about some potential grant funding that they could seek for a, to try to do a roundabout if that's what the, the community wanted. And there was support from the Board of County Commissioners, they would go seek that grant funding. No guarantee that they would get the grant funding, but they would try to use that grant funding to construct a roundabout in lieu of a four-way stop.
And Commissioner Lucas said it, I'm sorry. County Manager Lucas said it all just about right. I'm going to say it again, well, he actually said it right. I'm going to say it again for the layperson in the room, because it caused some confusion when it came up last time, so I just wanted to be on the record here clarifying this. There were a lot of people that were confused that said, because county commissioners said that, you know, we don't have, have any decision-making authority for DOT. And then all of a sudden, it comes out in the paper that DOT says that we did. We don't. What, the way that came about, and I had a very productive conversation with DOT about it after that last meeting, because I kind of sent a very similar email to them and said, look, you, you gave the public the impression that we have a choice. And the way that got brought back to me was, the DOT is done with Highway 73 at Millanport. They are effectively finished. They are happy forever to remain a four-way stop sign. They do not see the need to go any further. They don't have a specific desire to want to go any further. However, if we as a county, or our people, or our commissioners would prefer to have a roundabout as opposed to a four-way stop, they would be glad to go out and seek the funding from their project, I said, funding to do that. There is a pool that they can pull from. Our application could go in. We would not be guaranteed to get it, but we would have an opportunity to get it. However, it would be competing with other counties that have other projects. Therefore, if they sent in an application that we hadn't even bothered to fit, to formally ask for, probably be no chance of getting it. If we would like a roundabout as opposed to a four-way stop, and it's the only option on table, nothing else can be discussed, it's not a first stoplight, it's a stop. We would like to have a roundabout, which I personally would rather see than a four-way stop, we can sit to resolution stating so. Does anybody else have any comments they want to clarify on that or make on that?
Just a, just a quick comment. I'm not real thrilled about bringing this up, but if, I mean, if the board wants to bring it up, I'm okay with it. But, I mean, I just, I want to clarify for the public, we, we yield virtually no influence on this.
Correct.
And I think, I think that needs to be said, because we don't, we're not.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're not in control of DOT funds, so people, that average Joe out there needs to know that.
Correct.
I just want to state, this isn't necessar, the resolution is just saying that you would support a, you're supporting their application. It's not necessarily saying you prefer one over another, it's just saying you, you are supporting their application. This is DOT, this is DOT project, not a county project. You don't have any authority over roads in North Carolina. So all this resolution does is say that we support your application to go seek funding to construct a roundabout.
So, so quick clarification, if nobody makes the motion to proceed with it and no one seconds it, it's pretty much a done deal there, correct?
If no one makes a motion to.
No one seconds it even.
Yeah, if somebody can make a motion, there's no second, then there won't be a vote, because.
And it just dies.
If the, yeah.
I know a lot of people are just simply tired of this discussion. I don't blame any of you. I am too. Can I make the motion?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's, counties are different than cities.
I thought I could, it's just the chairman usually doesn't. So since I, I brought it up, I will save the headache and say, I would make the motion that we review and consider approval of the resolution that was already written.
I will second that.
Okay, so we, so we can have a, have a vote, and I won't be offended either way if it fails, that's okay. I felt like I wanted to have the vote. Thank you, Commissioner Shudo. I will have had that, and it'll be done either way. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, just basically, I mean, if you look at being a conservative county where you're fiscally conservative with money, through this whole process, the DOT has pretty much said, this has the same impact on safety as the roundabout, a four-way stop as a roundabout, except a four-way stop was like $10,000 or so, and a roundabout is $3 million. So I just don't see spending extra money for something that does the same, has the same safety features as the other one.
Well, and as a comment, if this were counted at $100, I would 100% agree with you, absolutely. The funding for this, I think, comes from our, our gas tax, the way all the DOT projects.
It's, it's likely federal or state money, yeah. It's, it's not county money.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do want to make a comment before we vote. This issue at Millanport's been a testy issue, lots of comments made from residents out My personal opinion is I think they should meet when they're doing four-way stops, roundabouts, or stoplights, I think they should meet with citizens within the community that that particular situation would cover. They didn't ask us when they put the four-way stop up, and it's my opinion that they've had the heat on them, and I think they're wanting the commissioners to take a little heat. Therefore, I will vote against this resolution, because I didn't make the decision to start with, and they didn't ask us for our advice. Now they're asking us to jump on the bandwagon. So I'm just clarifying why I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ditto what Commissioner Lohon said, and, and either way the, the vote goes doesn't mean that they're going to build one or not build one. You're just thrown into a pool, so everybody knows that.
Even if they do, my conversation with DOT, it may be three to five years before it can start. Or they may, e, even if this resolution passes, it may not go, go anywhere that they vote for it one time, they pick the Barris County for something else, and it never comes up again. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Barbie?
I ditto what they said also, and from past dealings with the DOT, it's evident that what we say up here or do up here has no bearing on whatever they do. That's evident from the roads that I live on. So therefore, I won't be voting for it either.
Okay, Mr. Barbie, thank you. Anybody else? Can we call for a vote? All right, so all in favor, please say aye. Aye. That would be easy. All opposed?
Nay.
Did I get that? Let the record flag, the vote failed six to one. One to six, I appreciate it. Thank you guys for, allow me to do that. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, item number 14. You guys have had.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shudo to approve it as presented, a second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner comments? Who was up there last time? Scott, you were here. You don't remember. Let's start with Commissioner, let's start with Commissioner Shudo.
I'll be quick. Quick shout out, and, and for the record, I'm getting this information from Charles Curcio at this Daily News of Press. Shout out to Rhett Louder, and he's having an amazing year at Wake Forest. He was the ACC pitcher of the year, and he's had some amazing stats. He was 11 and 3, 3.08 earned run average, struck out 105 batters in 99 innings. So shout out to, to Rhett Louder, an amazing, amazing year. I think, is he a sophomore this year, do you know, or is, and he's a sophomore. And then another shout out to Megan Sullivan at the History Center. They had Truck, the Truck Day on Saturday, and I went down there and she was pretty happy. I think they had like 500 people at the beginning of the, early in the day. She said Andy was down at the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and maybe you know better than I do, what they, they were grand opening for was they have a Smith, an exhibit they partnered with, with the Smithsonian about work throughout Stanley County. And it's actually very impressive thing that they use, they partnered with Pfeiffer to do some of the art and everything, and had some other partnerships. So big shout out to Megan, and that's all I got to say.
Commissioner Barbie?
No comment.
Commissioner Efer?
Just one quick one. Before our next meeting in September, school will have started. And it's very important, I know Locust Police Department is doing a school supply drive for Locust Elementary, and there's a lot of school supply drives for other schools in our area, and I know Peter, with him being a teacher this year, bless their hearts, will.
It's hard or their heart?
Theirs. He knew what he was getting into. Go out there, if you, if you're buying supplies for your kids, pick up an extra pack of paper or pencils or crayons or glue sticks or something, drop them off at your school. I know they could really appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Efer. Commissioner Fehr?
Attorney.
Okay, Commissioner Lohon?
Just a few. I'd like to thank Scott for chairing our last meeting while Tommy was vacationing and I was on my, you know, COVID rest.
Vacate, you were vacating.
Yeah, whatever. Also, this Wednesday, Commissioner Barbie and I are going to do a tour at the Senior Center, so if any of you guys want to join. Yeah. And also, Melanie Hollis, our library director, is taking another job. She's having a retirement party this Friday.
Not retirement, just going.
Or going away, sorry, going away. So I just want to invite you guys.
Commissioner Barbie, you checking out a new place to live? Yes. Okay.
They won't let Zach in without some adult supervision.
They told me to bring some insurer for Mike's sake.
Right. Oh, I'm going to miss this, this board, I swear. Yeah, I, I was in vacation, I was on vacation in July down the Outer Banks. It was fantastic. I do love Stanley, but OBX was my home first, and it, it's good to go back. I got to go skydiving, jump out of a perfectly good plane at 10,000 feet for no good reason other than a guy said, you're strapped to me, so we're going. That was fun. My wife loves it way more than me, but it is fun. Glad to be, glad to be back. Yeah, school is starting, and Commissioner Efer, thank you for bringing that up. For those of you that don't know, and I don't have a way to, I don't have the details handy, I'll just say, if you follow me on Facebook, I'm sure I'll post about it between now and then. But there is a back-to-school bike ride, I'm sorry, a back-to-school ride this Saturday, the 13th. Is that right? Yeah. If you ride a motorcycle, if you want to bring a Jeep, all the money raised goes towards buying supplies for Stanley County schools. That's pretty neat. And there's also a ride this coming Saturday for, I think, Mount Flat, is it? He got injured, and so there's a fundraiser for him. Always cool, things going on with bike clubs and the summer. Board of Health has been, been good. I mean, our, our last Board of Health meeting, COVID numbers are up, but they've got things managed as best they can. Airport authorities are going fine right now, right? So I don't have anything to report on those. I will end with, thank you guys for allowing me to serve, and I'll have a great night. We get a motion to adjourn?
I get a motion to adjourn.